Call the City of Warrenton Board of Aldermen meeting to orders for July 3, 2012. Would you all stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the regular Board of Aldermen minutes from June 19, 2012. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion we approve the regular Board of Aldermen meeting minutes of June 19, 2012.
Second? Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the regular Board of Aldermen meeting minutes of June 19, 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 3B, executive session minutes from June 5, 2012.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes from June 5, 2012.
Second? Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the executive session minutes from June 5, 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Flake? Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell? Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Clark? Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer? Alderman Clark?
Yes.
I abstain, I was not present.
Yes. Alderman Dryer?
Motion carried six to zero.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one abstention. Item 3D, executive session minutes from budget work session of June 13, 2012. Item 3C, executive session minutes from special meeting of June 13, 2012.
Motion to approve executive session minutes from special meeting of June 13, 2012. Motion to approve executive session minutes from special meeting of June 13, 2012.
Second? Second? Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the executive Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the executive session minutes from special meeting of June 13, 2012. session minutes from special meeting of June 13, 2012. Roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell? Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow? Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall? Alderman Kendall?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Clark? Alderman Clark?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Dryer? Alderman Dryer?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Flake? Alderman Flake?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Motion carried six to zero. Item 3D, executive session minutes from budget work session of June 13, 2012. Item 3D, executive session minutes from budget work session of June 13, 2012.
Make a motion we approve the executive session minutes from budget work session Make a motion we approve the executive session minutes from budget work session of June 13, 2012. of June 13, 2012.
Second? Second? Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the executive Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the executive session minutes from budget work session of June 13, 2012. session minutes from budget work session of June 13, 2012. Roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Alderman Tallow? Alderman Tallow?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Kendall? Alderman Kendall?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Clark? Alderman Clark?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Dryer? Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 4, hearing from the public as we do each meeting, anybody that would like to address the board of their city, please come forward to the podium, give us your name, and try to keep your remarks five minutes or under.
Mr. Mayor and Board of Aldermen, my name is Don Williams and I live at 601 Lincoln Court in the city. And I'm the ward to Fred Blake's ward and Beth Kendall's ward. I'm here to discuss the Greenies issue along my property. We, uh, the city addressed it by the Public Works Department, uh, along, uh, from Lincoln Court down to Pinkley Street by laying some concrete in the waterway. And up, uh, well, from Lincoln Court up to Pershing Street, it's not been addressed. And for 28 years, my wife and I have had the bag of rubbish, one that rains, leaves and sticks and some, uh, unique debris. And we've had the bag of, uh, from one to six bags of rubbish, whatever, rains real hard, that, uh, is from upstream, downstream. And I'm here to make you aware of that because our health conditions are not good anymore. And I had a stroke is why my speech is slurred. And about two and a half years ago, as I was result of my, my health is not so good. Marion is older now.
No she's not.
We have difficulty dealing with that issue and we seem to get little help from our neighbors so we have to deal with it all by ourselves. And I would appreciate a steady taking a look at it, Alderman Flake and Alderman Kendall. And, uh, of course, if the water runs off a hundred pounds or plus in, at Greenies area and both commercial and residential properties. And, uh, uh, some, uh, some neighbors upstream conveniently dump their rubbish. So we have to deal with it and it stops on, uh, it stops, it stops on our property and we would appreciate it greatly if you, Alderman Flake and Alderman Kendall could come by and take a look at it sometime, okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
That's all I've got to say. Okay?
Thank you, Don. Don, I feel like I might have dropped the ball on that a little bit myself because you called that to my attention a month or so ago. And, and I got caught up in other city problems and that's never followed through.
We understand.
Okay.
You're a busy man.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Mr. Mayor and Board, last meeting wasn't recorded or the no sound and I've had a few phone calls to repeat what I said last meeting, if that's okay, I'll do it very quickly. What, I'm Stan Shelton, I did the petition to have the city audited. We needed 417 signatures, we got about 615. I have turned in those signatures about 10 days ago to the state auditor's office in Jeff City. They told me there that it would be anywhere from most likely three to six months before they would contact the city. They're that four behind in their auditing. So, and what else I would like to repeat is that I had fun doing that. I, I enjoyed meeting the public. As I said last time, I got the whole dogs, cats, babies invited in to sit down at kitchen tables, sit down at poker games, people in their garages having parties was invited in and it, and it was enjoyable, very enjoyable to hear what the public had to say. And as I said last meeting, that the most disturbing thing was the, the city workers I ran across or the spouses that were worried about their jobs if they would sign that petition. And I don't think I mentioned last time, I ran across a vendor and the vendor was very adamant that he wouldn't sign it, he was afraid that somebody would get back to, to the city that he had signed this petition. So I, I feel it's very sad that we have our workers that are scared for their jobs. And hopefully, Mr. Mayor, something can be done to put them more at ease, make it a more inviting place to work for them. And that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stan. Any other people from the public or citizens that would like to address the board, do so at this time? If not, we will move on and we'll extend the same courtesy to our Board of Aldermen. See if any of the board members have any individual comments that you'd like to share with the public or rest of the board. I know John's dying to say something.
Who? Not tonight.
No?
I would just like to thank everyone involved, Jenny, all the crew that helped out with Catch the Globe. Thought it was a nice evening.
I agree.
Was warm?
Echoes of settlements.
Warm. Jenny, do you know maybe a head count? Do we know, do we have a normal crowd or it looked smaller than normal to me?
You know, when I, Alderman Kendall, when I took a look, it looked busy.
Maybe not.
I guess it really depended on where you were and at what time. There were times when it crossed my mind that we have group venue. It was so full, I was trying to get from one end to the other and I'm zigzagging through people and bumping into them.
Was it later?
It was more around when the sun was starting to set and, you know, that time when the main stage performance is getting ready to kick off the headliner. So, I mean, it was a great turnout. I know it's definitely bigger than last year. When there's so many people, it's hard for me to get a true number, but, um, you know, I've had that event reported in the past, two to 3,000 people. I just know that there wasn't much blacktop visible from the top of the venue.
You went to the wrong one.
I must have been on the wrong street.
You went the wrong street.
But you know what, I try and stay on the sidewalk, so maybe that was...
And my, um, my intention at that time was to get through the street, so I was really focusing on the number of people and getting around them.
Sure.
It, it looked pretty, pretty full to me.
I was impressed with the, uh, the variety of vendors she had this year.
Right, we did have a number of food vendors as well as the merchants that came out. They presented a great festival atmosphere, I thought was fantastic.
Nice job, let everybody know.
We did a lot of help.
And I also wanted to thank Brad because I think it's his crew. You didn't know you were going to be in the spotlight, they're just sitting out there in the audience. Whoever drives the big, and for lack of better terms, the mower with the big arm that cuts along Ash Road in 47 there?
That's Walter, that's part of the guy.
Well, thank him because we all appreciate being able to see.
I'll pass that along to Guy, I'll pass it along to Walter.
Thank you. When we pull out of there. Appreciate it.
Anything else?
John?
Mr. Clark?
No, I'm good.
You sure? Mr. Flake?
I had a few calls from people concerning the no audio on the last meeting that we had and I assured them it was something to do with the equipment and that it would be fixed and I understand that was the problem. But it shows, this shows that there's a lot of people that watch the city meetings.
I agree. Mr. Dryer? Okay. We're going to move on to Mayor's report to the board. I'm going to take advantage of Mr. Shelton's issue since no one heard him last week. I assume no one heard me either, so I want to reiterate myself about the, one thing of the trash service, recycling in particular, ideas for the public's help and the board's help, if we could find a way to increase our participation in the recycling issue in Warrenton. Right now, only 33% of our residents participate in recycling. So, I've had some phone calls, mainly from the newspaper article, but I've had some suggestions and phone calls and hopefully we'll get some more of that. I'm, I'm open to suggestions on what we can do. That, that's the easy item I want to talk about. The other item is a difficult item to talk about, it's a serious item and that's our, our City of Warrenton's problem with our water system. That maybe most of you saw the city's press release this morning where we asked for a voluntary conservation of water for the next few days, see if we can get our water tables up. This has been going on for, you know, I guess since the drought started. And we keep thinking it's going to start raining and things are going to get better, but in turn they get worse. We, we're using more water out of the system than what's going into the system. The tables continue to drop. Some, some of the issues that right now, like well number six is one we're having a lot of problems with, that's over by Chick Lumber Company. The pumps have an automatic shut-off system when the bottom of the pump only has 20 feet of water on it. Number six shuts off quite frequently and, and basically the water table is, is pulling down way too low. So we have to turn that well off. When we turn that well off, one of the other wells has to pick up the pace. So, so well number four might be running 24 hours a day, seven days a week to, to make up for number six. We're not sure how long we can go on like this without taking more drastic measures. I prepared, rather than me ramble on, I've, I've got a prepared statement I'd like to read to you that might give the history of the, of the problems and, and rather than me trying to remember them all, I'll read this to you. There are many factors attributable to the current reduced levels of water available from the underground water sources used by the city. This shortage initially started with the minimal amounts of snowfall throughout the winter months that was compounded by the lack of rainfall in the spring, particularly in May and June during which the University of Missouri Climate Center noted a six-inch deficit alone. In addition, the January-June temperatures are the warmest temperatures averaged on record in 118 years. The Climate Center said if these conditions persist, this season is shaping up to become one of the three worst droughts of the last century. Throughout the year, daily monitoring of the well levels occurs and some reduced daily levels have been noted since April of this year. The month of June saw these levels continue to decline but failing to recover quickly. Over the past week with 100-plus degree weather, the levels at the oldest wells have failed to recover at an acceptable pace. These wells particularly serve the southern part of town. The wells in the northern section of town are deeper and pose much less concern. If the water level recovery continues to be unacceptable, the booster station will be shut down, which will reduce the water pressure in the southern section of town back to the levels prior to the booster station installation. The towers in the south can be fed from the north wells, but this will result in those wells potentially running continually, which puts a major strain on their motors. The situation will be reassessed on Thursday of this week to determine if the voluntary conservation efforts have been made, a significant enough impact to allow the necessary recovery in the water levels to avoid a mandatory conservation requirements. I want to reiterate the seriousness of the problems and Thursday morning, we will meet with the staff to evaluate whether the voluntary conservation has had any impact on the wells and if they have not increased their water tables levels high enough, we will go to a mandatory water conservation. And this, this will mean absolutely no watering of lawns, no sprinkler systems, it'll force us to shut down the city swimming pool, which we've already shut down the slides and the, and the spray area already. It will force us to shut down the car washes, not a pleasant task to be faced with. And, and we will try that for a while and see what happens and, and go from there. But I did want the public and, and the board and the citizens to know how serious of a situation that we are in. I have one more topic on, on my reports that I want to mention mainly to the board. I think I've kind of briefed you with some short emails and that's a situation on property within a city of Warrenton that has a farming operation or agricultural-based operation and by, for some reason or no fault of their own, their zone not, not agricultural. And, and right now, the staff is kind of evaluating that situation and see how many of these pieces of property we have. If, if there's a handful, that'll be great. If there's two handfuls, we'll, we'll address that. But our situation is if, if they are operating an agricultural-based system and they've been doing it for the last 30, 40, 50 years, they certainly have a right to continue that operation and, and keep that agricultural thing going. And basically, I, they, they need to be listed as a non-conforming usage situation. Am I correct on that, Ms., is that a good term, Mr. Gervell?
Yes, that's correct. Legal non-conforming use.
Okay, so, so we're going to, we're going to be proactive in that, in identifying those pieces of property. We're going to make contact with those individuals and give them an opportunity to apply for a non-conforming usage situation. So, I just wanted to make, make everybody aware of that. And that's all I have to say. I wish I had more good news for you, but, uh, right, right now, it's not a good situation for us. Uh, I'm going to move on to item seven, approval of fireworks exhibition permit for the Warrenton County Fair Association. Is there someone from the fair like to address, address it? Would you, and come forward and at the podium and state your name.
Mike, I'm the fire chief of the Warrenton Fire Protection District. Just to let you all know, the little bit of rain that we did get yesterday out at the fairgrounds, we've been monitoring the situation as of yesterday morning, we were not going to allow them to shoot those fireworks at the fairgrounds. The rain that we did get yesterday helped, it's going to make a significant difference. We did meet with the owner of the fireworks company yesterday afternoon and they've agreed to some alterations to the, to the fireworks show. They're going to remove any ground effects, basically what they call the pancakes, anything that sits close to the ground that, that throws anything real close to the ground. They're also going to remove the, what they call the willow, basically that's the shell that, that once it's fired, it explodes and everything slowly drifts back towards the ground in a shower. They're taking all of those out. Third thing that they're going to do is remove all of the four-inch shells because of the height that they shoot, basically for every inch, you get about 70 feet. Those 280-foot shells, we were worried about the, how far they would drift north and be able to get into the woods. So they're taking all the four-inch shells out, they're going back to all three-inch shells. They are bringing extra people with them to maintain the area around where they're shooting. And we are also going to have it, probably five vehicles of our apparatus over there on-site around the perimeter of the area to maintain that perimeter, that, the area where they're shooting. We actually moved them further away from the wood line and actually further away from the parking lot to give them more distance between anything, any type of combustible material, we'll say. Like, what we did tell them is, is if we have a problem, we will shut them down immediately. If there's any issue that we feel that, that we cannot take care of with minimal effort, that we are going to shut them down at that point in time and they will no, they will not fire any more shells. Also, we're going to try, we're going to work with them, you know, again, if there's any issues whatsoever, we'll stop it from that point and they'll just quit. So, if anybody's got any questions on, on what we've worked with them on or have any questions?
So what's left as far as your equipment that won't be there in case of other issues?
Uh, we've got 18 different, we've got, we're actually bringing folks in from Bright City to help us out. We're going to put, they also know that if we are not there and we don't have, if we're busy with calls, they're not going to fire. If we're not available...
That was my question.
Correct. If we get busy or something happens, we'll shut them off, we'll go do our thing, you know, and they'll just stop. They know that if we are not there and we are not there to maintain that perimeter, they will not fire a shell. So that was an agreement that we made with the owner and the fair board yesterday. Again, that was this morning after it rained last night. So, the good part about it is, is humidity's up, you know. We've got a few things that look like we may get a little bit of rain tonight, hopefully we will. And the woods will stay with humidity where it's at, the woods will stay damp, you know, I was, been keeping an eye on it all day, so. And over there checking the area and back out in, next to the woods. So, we're probably a thousand feet now from any wooded area, I should say. By where we moved them to, we were a little closer than that and we're a thousand to 1,200 feet away from, from any of that at this point, where we relocated their shells to. So, and we will maintain a presence with them as they're testing and watching things and have them readjust as necessary, based upon wind conditions.
Mike, I got on the internet earlier today and I was looking at the number of cities that, that have canceled their fireworks display.
Correct.
So is it because of the rain yesterday that makes it more presentable for you all?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yesterday morning, when we spoke to the fair board president, we had told him that we're, we're going to cancel the show. We're not going to allow it to fire. With the rain that we got, it rained 20 minutes the first time, 30 minutes the second time. Good, hard rain out there. My concern was not necessarily the field because the field that they're shooting them off in is, is large. We can maintain that field, but if it gets to the wood line, then we were going to have a problem. And that was my primary concern. And that was the other reason we asked them to take those four-inch shells out of there to get everything down lower. Won't be quite the same show, but it's going to be the best that they can do at this point.
What about a wind issue?
Correct. Any wind is, anything that, that, they'll do a couple test fires for us, if we don't like it, we'll stop it at that point in time, too. So, we will stop it at that point in time. That's one of the other considerations that, they understand that if we walk out there and it's five minutes to time and we tell them, no, we're not going to do it, they won't do it. And they'll reschedule.
Your word goes a long way with me. And if I'm hearing you right, you're, you're telling us and the board that you're going to take responsibility for those fireworks and you feel it's safe and you're going to monitor it and have the equipment and the man fire?
Absolutely.
Do a handling, anything that goes through.
If, if we feel that there's, that it is not safe to shoot those shells, then we will stop them at that point in time and we will not allow them to go on. I don't want to create a problem, we don't want to create a problem for anybody, any of the neighbors or any of the public that's out there, we'll stop it. You know, we will make sure that there won't be a problem. If, if anything does develop, we're going to shut them off right there at that point in time. We'll take care of it and we won't let them shoot anymore.
Go ahead.
I'm a little bit, I, I'm glad that you're here, you're the expert on this. My concern is that having a fireworks display in this, in these conditions, flies in the face of common sense, I would say.
I understand.
I just, when I see everybody else around canceling them, I'm sure some of them bring...
Correct.
And my, my conflict is, I have no problem saying, you know what, that's a dangerous situation, but then I've got somebody with your credentials standing here saying it can be done safely.
Correct. And actually, some of those folks, the, the company that is shooting at the fairgrounds had Eureka and a couple of those other ones and they did call them yesterday and ask them if they could do theirs on the fourth and they said, no, we can't. And, and it's not because of the weather, it's because we've already rescheduled and we don't have anything ready to go for you because we'd already postponed it. So a couple of those areas that were on that list, because I have that list laying on my desk as well, I've been keeping an eye on that. And, and like I said, yesterday morning, it was off, we were not going to do it. And had it not rained like it did yesterday, we were not going to shoot that. They were not, we were not going to allow that show to go on. So, we were not going to allow that show to go on. You know, we've been out there most of the way.
There's going to be some hot loot to stand then if something goes wrong.
Understand, understand.
Then are you going to monitor afterwards for...
Correct.
In the evening?
Absolutely.
So I can sleep?
Absolutely.
Because it'll come my way, I'm sure.
Uh-huh. Absolutely. We will, we're going to be on the, on the far side of it, watching and maintaining where, you know, so we will place our apparatus where things are coming down so that we can maintain and watch those. And like I said, if we see too much stuff coming down to the ground, and that's part of the reason, most of the time, the, the willows are the ones that we really, really get concerned about. Because those last so long and get so close to the ground, the other ones, by the time they get down, there's nothing left. They also, one of the other things that they're going to do to prevent anything falling back down is they're going to, those shells have a long gunpowder fuse on them, they're taking those off. Basically, they're going to cut them off at the top of the shell, they're going to put their electronic igniter right at the top of the shell to prevent anything from going up in the air and, and blowing out of that tube and getting airborne. So that, that's, gunpowder wrapped in paper is all it is. And they're going to take those and cut those off of those, remount the igniters right to the top of the shell to prevent any other, any other issues. The company, again, the company that, that is doing it has worked with us really well. We sat and talked about it for a long time yesterday afternoon and at that point in time, we were going to call the show off, we were going to cancel it, we weren't allowed, we weren't going to allow it to shoot. So, again, the rain yesterday afternoon made a big difference for, and, and from our respect, the, the rain yesterday afternoon did make a big difference for that.
You know, with the heat today and the heat expected tomorrow, there was no rain in here.
Yeah, and it's because of humidity staying up. You know, that's the big difference. You know, the humidity is staying up and we will be there. You know, like I said, if we're not there, it's not going, it's not going to happen.
How long do you all, you all are going to have a perimeter around this drop zone? How long after the end of the show will they remain?
Will remain out there for as long as necessary. I mean, if we see, if we think that an hour, two hours, whatever it takes to make sure that we, that we know, because most of that stuff, the paper, it's only going to take because most of that stuff, the paper, it's only going to take a few minutes, you know, for it to burn out. Most of the material, when it comes down, you'll see it if it's hot or if it's smaller when it comes down, especially behind the show. Out in front of the show, where you're sitting and watching it, you don't usually see that because the winds, or the wind or the, how they aim the tubes allows it to come up. And then as it, as the shell goes off, then the stuff goes back behind it. That way, we don't end up with it out in the parking lot. So that's how they'll aim their tubes, and that's where we're going to position our apparatuses back behind that, in that area where that stuff is coming down so we can maintain it. If we see a lot of hot stuff coming down, we'll put a stop. You know, we'll call the show off. We'll stop it.
Alderman Clark?
I'm just wondering what, besides, I don't know what else you'd be shooting except for the, I call aerial bombs and those with the big reports?
Yes.
What else would they be shooting if, at the show? It doesn't sound like it's going to be much of a show if it's-
The, what they call the starbursts, okay? The ones that go up and they, they just basically, when they explode, they spread out in a ball, okay?
You're allowing those?
Yes, those are, those are fine. Anything that, anything that has a, you've seen some of the ones that make noise. They, when they go off, there's a starburst and then there's the whistlers. Those aren't, no, they're taking everything, everything like that. And all it'll be is the starburst, okay? 210 feet in the air for a three-inch shell. Like I said, we've done this before when it was dry. We had one out there. They actually were over closer to the woods that time. That was quite a few years ago that we had a, had a time with that one. We actually spent a lot of time out in the woods chasing stuff around. But they continued to shoot the same, the starburst, not starburst, but the willows, and that's the ones that we were having trouble with, and that's the ones we were having issues with. Again, they're going to bring extra people with them to maintain their area so we can concentrate on the backyard, or right around where they're shooting.
Alderman Dyer? Questions?
Some of the neighbors out there had some concerns about, you know, being so dry and everything. But it sounds like you've got a pretty good plan, so hopefully, we can get a shower of rain tonight would sure help.
It would definitely help. It would definitely help. So, like I said, if we see anything that we don't like, like I said, the fair board is agreeable, has agreed with me that they're leaving it up to us to make the call whether that show goes on or not. So if we see anything that we don't like out there tomorrow, or tomorrow afternoon, or even tomorrow evening, then we're going to go ahead and put, we'll go ahead and stop it. Okay?
Okay. If there's no other questions, we thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you for having me.
Coming and filling us in.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
You're welcome. Item eight on the agenda is approval of the fireworks exhibition permit for the Warren County Fair Association. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Well, in light of Chief Ombe's recommendation, I'll make a motion that we approve the fireworks exhibition and give them a permit for the Warren County Fair.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Towel, approved by Alderman Kendall to approve the fireworks exhibition permit for the Warren County Fair Association. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Towel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item number eight, Neighborhood Stabilization Program Income Reuse Plan. Mr. Etter, are you going to enlighten us?
I'll try.
You'll try.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Just a little history on the Neighborhood Stabilization Program for the city of Warrenton. This was a project we took off in 2009. It was funded through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. Stimulus dollars is what you probably know it as. The program is designed to allow communities to stabilize the neighborhoods by buying up foreclosed homes, rehabbing them, and then putting them out on the market. The city is working with Boone-Sloane Regional Planning Commission to do this in the Warrenton area. And to date, we've been able to purchase five homes, rehab those. Three of those five have been sold. The reason before we tonight is, the state of Missouri recently underwent an audit by the Housing and Urban Development, which is the federal arm of, that's providing the funding for this program. And as we sell each one of these homes, the sales, the money coming from that sales, determined by the federal government, is program income. It's just a term, basically, that says, here's what you're going to do this month. It's being generated by federal grants. And the state was asked to have each of their subrecipients develop a program income reuse plan that gives you the authority to retain those federal dollars for eligible uses under the program. Without a reuse plan, we have to send that money back to the federal treasury. We don't want to do that because the way the program is structured, in July, after July 31st of 2013, all of that program income that you're able to retain, you as a city, we will provide that back to you as a city to do any other eligible community development project with. And right now, you've got about $320,000 worth of program income that's been generated. By the time we sell the other two homes, you're looking at about a half million dollars that would be available to the city, as long as we're able to retain that. So, the state's prepared this templated reuse plan that basically gives you the right to retain that money and reuse it for the purposes of the NSP program, which right now, there's five uses. And it's basically buying homes, land banking, rehabbing homes, banking, or creating home mortgage financing programs, et cetera. There's five multiple uses. And you can use that money today to go out and buy another foreclosed home. You can use that money today to go out and demolish vacant structures, obliterated structures. Anything in the housing arena you can do. But then in July of 2013, we'll come back again and say, here's a reuse plan that allows us to use it for anything else eligible under the CDBG, which is basically anything you're investing in, with the exception of swimming pools, golf courses, and municipal offices. Other than that, the money's pretty much wide open for use. But it will be subject to all the CDBG requirements at that point. But to get us to that point, we have to get through this, to this point, to allow us to retain that money. And that's what the reuse plan is for.
Any questions for Mr. Etter?
Is there a timeframe, kind of particular template?
The state sent it out to us a couple of weeks ago and said, "We'd like to get these back in around the 1st of July if we can," because they're trying to respond back to HUD on their monitoring issues. If we can get it done, either this meeting or your next one, I think that would be satisfactory. I did talk with the state when it was out there last Thursday, and they're like, "Yeah, as soon as you can get it done, just get it to us."
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns about the stabilization program? Do we need a motion on that to participate?
Well, I would ask if we can go to the next meeting so we can prepare an ordinance to approve it for the mayor to sign it, because I'm sure that's probably what the state wants anyway, is an ordinance. Is that okay, ratifying it, if we wait till the next meeting to do it, Steve?
It's two weeks, probably.
Yeah, two weeks.
Okay.
We'll be okay. And we'll have that ordinance prepared to sign it. And I reviewed it as we're sitting here, and it looks pretty-
So we really need no action on this right now?
No action. We'll have that ready to approve next meeting.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Next item is a report from city clerk, Melody.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Just not to get technical, I know you guys are aware that the June 19th Warrenton meeting did not have any audio. And Greg Hattishell and John Moreno spent last week looking over the video equipment, and they have replaced the audio mixer, which wasn't working properly. It may have been older than dirt.
So we got a new one now?
We did.
Good, good. I agree with Alderman Flake there. I'm amazed sometimes how many people are listening to these meetings. And I got several calls and, you know, what, we couldn't read the lips, you know. Couldn't hear you, so, good, thank you. Is that all you have, Melody?
That's it.
I got item 10, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Officers, report.
My first item for you this evening is a request for approval of the accounts payable for the previous month. It totals $212,808.15. And just a note for you that included in this payables list is the $10,000 fee to the Greater Warrenton County Economic Development Council. We did receive their invoice for that. And I think you had at your desk tonight the cover letter that was with that indicating that they've agreed to get the required information from either a local or not-so-local CPA, whatever their choice is, but they have agreed to the attestation that we requested.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
You really don't want it to be done until you get to the end of your year, because right now, they're brand-new. There's really nothing for them to look at.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I talked to one of the board members today. In fact, they tried to call you to let you know, and not knowing we're going to get this tonight, and then they found a favorable price.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's good.
So they were happy with that.
Good.
Good news.
I think there's no doubt they're, they're wanting to work with us and do what's required. So, according to, from the looks of the letter they sent us, that they're in agreement with everything. We need a motion on the accounts payable.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Towel made a motion. Alderman Kendall seconded to approve the accounts payable. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Towel?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
My next item for you this evening is a request for approval of the auto repair and service bids. As we do annually, we sent this out for bid. We received two responses, one from Warrenton Tire and Muffler and one from Marks Automotive. It was a little different than previous years, where everything seemed comparable across the board, and it was very clear which rates were lower. This time, it really was not so clear, since their labor rates were different, and then the percentage of markup on parts was opposite of what their labor rates were. We did some additional investigation on these and actually met with representatives of both companies. And I provided you at your desk tonight a comparison of those other things that we looked at. One of our concerns was that, in one instance, the labor rate per hour was lower, but the markup was higher for parts. Just the opposite was true of the other bidder, where their labor rate was higher, but the markup was lower. So in order to at least compare something to try to get a feel for where that was, we asked them to provide a cost on a specific one of our vehicles for replacing the front brakes and rotors. And those numbers are reflected on your comparison. Warrenton Tire came in at $279.17. Marks Automotive came in at $287.96. There's not a huge difference there, but there is some. Other comparable items, Warrenton Tire is including an unlimited number of quarts of oil for an oil change at their rate that they bid. Marks Automotive is charging $2.89 for any additional quarts. They're using comparable oil. They're both using recognized labor guides. They're both using reputable suppliers. We did ask the question of Marks Automotive about how they would handle items that have been put on our vehicles that are still under warranty, if we should change providers. They indicated that they would be able to go back to the supplier of those items and get that warranty honored. The one area that I do see a big difference is in their ASE certifications for their employees. We asked them to bring in copies of those certification documents. And a significant difference in that is that Warrenton Tire has three master technicians, meaning that they've received ASE certification in all the different areas. Marks does have some ASE certification. They were able to provide documents for one of their people, but it is only in some of the areas that there is certification available. So not all of the different components that make up the master technician area have been done. It appears that based upon all of that, that remaining with Warrenton Tire and Muffler is my recommended option for the city.
Ms. Allen, can you, on the auto repair and service bid bid tab sheet, it looks like Marks Automotive lists two ASE certified mechanics and two diesel certified mechanics, but then on the comparison that you provided, it shows only one partial ASE and no diesel certified.
That is all the documentation that they were able to provide us.
Where did, on the bid tab, where did the two and two, that they had two certified mechanics and two diesel certified, where did that information? I guess, why the difference between the two?
The person who met with us indicated that they did have another certified individual, but they were unable to reach him to obtain copies of his certification. And the one that we did look at, there is a difference between being certified for gas vehicles and diesel vehicles. And the document actually showed that it is a gasoline vehicle that the individual is certified for.
So they, they initially said that they had two certified, and then?
But we were unable to document that information.
Any other questions or concerns?
I make a motion, we go with the recommendations Director of Operations and Finance Officers accept a bid from Warrenton Tire and Muffler for auto repairs and service.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Towel, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the Warrenton Tire and Muffler bid for auto service and repair bid. Roll call vote.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Towel?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next I have for you, in your packet, you had a document that talks about sunshine law considerations. Melody and I and Mayor Dyer attended a training seminar over at Wentzville a few weeks ago that was put on by Tom Durkin, who is the Public Education Director from the Attorney General's Office. And it was basically on basics of the sunshine law and what the best practices are. We came away from that with some things that if it is our decision as a city to take the best practices as presented by Mr. Durkin, some things that we need to at least consider changing. And our city attorney has reviewed these, and we talked about them to make sure that he concurs with Mr. Durkin's recommendations. Probably the biggest of all of these to be considered is a potential change in the way we handle our agenda for executive sessions. Mr. Durkin indicates that the best practice is to include no language, basically, on your agenda related to executive session unless you specifically have a topic and intend to have an executive session. And at that point, you are supposed to actually cite the section of the sunshine law code under which you're planning on having it. He did state that while listing, as we currently do, or putting the paragraph on your agenda, it is not illegal. There is nothing illegal about that. And I think what we've seen is a shift, if you will, in the way that we're doing business most recently, in that we're not having as many executive sessions. We're not having as many things that we need to talk about under that. So, you know, maybe this is an opportune time, if you want to consider making that change, to at least consider it. As I said, he said, "There's nothing illegal about what we're doing." It would be the best practice if that's what we choose to do. One of the things that he also was very clear in indicating is that if you have something that comes up and you've not had the ability to post with the 24-hour notice that's required, you can always, under the emergency provisions, be able to hold an executive session that meets the requirements, as long as you indicate in your minutes why it was an emergency and why you were unable to meet the notice requirement. So if something happened on a Tuesday morning that you needed to discuss in executive session, you would simply do that, but make note in your minutes as to why you weren't able to provide the required notice.
That's good, because that was one of our concerns when we discussed this. So that's good.
He was very clear to say, if it's an emergency situation, there's really no problem with that as long as you document your reason.
I find Mr. Durkin to be a very entertaining presenter. Well polished in the sunshine law, and he made it interesting for us.
He did, and it's a pretty dry topic.
It is a dry topic.
So, he did a really good job, I thought, of keeping you interested in what he was saying.
He wrestled very, very well, so. I guess, my point on it is, and I think I reiterated this to the board before, it goes back to perception, and public perception, and if they think we're doing something wrong or illegal, that's 90% of the battle. So, if this, if this would be a way of changing that perception, then I would be very much in favor of it.
I don't know, I don't know what the perception is. I know when this issue came up once before, my concern at the time was that I didn't feel like I had sat here long enough to make an educated decision about whether a change was needed. I do think that- I do think that at some point, following the best practice, we'll usually do that when auditors tell us to follow best practice procedure, unless there is a legitimate reason not to. I guess I'm of the mindset now of, I don't know what damage could be to change to the recommended best practice. We certainly wouldn't be obligated to stay with that if in the future we find that doesn't work for us. But I can't think of a good reason not to follow the recommended best practice.
I think you got a valid point. If we see it's not working, it's not chiseled in stone to follow that practice. We can always go back and go a different direction.
I guess I need to know why we've done it for, how many years? How many years has it been listed on there?
I can't say because it's been here longer than I have.
Long time.
I have a problem with taking it off. That's all I'm going to say. You all know how I feel about it.
I don't have a problem with the way we're doing it other than it's being presented as there is possibly a better way of doing it. And I don't see what the harm would be in changing it.
But John, my point is, if there's a better way of doing it, why weren't we approached 20 years ago? Do you follow me?
I absolutely do.
I personally have never been approached by one person in six years that says to me, well, that's listed on there. Why are you doing it? It's sneaky. It's this. It's that. We have an attorney sitting in on every executive session we've ever had. So there's no shady business going on.
I will tell you, I have not had anybody approach me either. But I did bring the topic up to a couple of different people. And one of them absolutely agreed with that the appearance is not proper.
One out of how many hundreds did you speak to, John?
I spoke to two.
You only spoke to two about the executive session?
Absolutely. Which it sounds like that's more than he said.
I thought you meant when you were campaigning.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. Let me clarify. This was after the initial discussion.
Oh, okay.
When I spoke to somebody and said, you know, I haven't been there long enough to make an educated decision on it and got their opinion. And they absolutely presented to me their opinion that it appears to them that the city is not, they're hiding behind an executive session and they're not being upfront and honest with the agenda.
I'll disagree with that.
Well, I don't think you can disagree with somebody else's opinion. That's their perception. I'm not saying that we are being dishonest, far from it. But I think that if that is the perception, I think it's something to at least, other than we've always done it this way, we're constantly in every aspect of our life finding better and more proper ways of doing something. Just because this was a point out to us 20 years ago doesn't mean that it wasn't proper to have changed two years ago, five years ago.
I just need to know, I guess, then from everybody else, have you had people complaining about it being on there? Like I said, I've never had one person approach me about it.
Well, I never have, but again, my main concern, and I think I stated that if it's not broke, go fix it. My main concern was on the emergency things that came up. If we would have ran into a problem with that situation, which, you know, we'll put a kink in everything, but it was answered through this gentleman, so. I don't, it doesn't make me any difference.
I don't, back to Beth or Alderman Kendall's question, I don't think that we're saying it's been wrong. You know, the way you all have done it for the last 16 or 20 years or whatever it is, I don't think you all were wrong in doing it that way. But maybe there is a better way. I think the public perception is important to us. I think one thing you'll need to consider is how quick Mr. Shelton got 607 votes to do an audit. Is there something out there in the public that we're not seeing? I mean, I'm kind of astounded by that, how easy he got those votes. So is there an issue with the public that they think we're doing something wrong? I remember Mr. Durkin's comment about public perception when he addressed the sunshine law. And one of the things he reiterated to us several times is, if the public perceives that you're doing something wrong behind closed doors or illegal, why should they believe anything you're doing out in open session? You remember him saying that? For some reason, that stuck home with me. So my idea was, I wanted to move, I wanted to do it the correct way as much as possible. And if this is a better way, a more open way, that was my reasoning for looking at it to begin with.
There's always going to be public perception. No matter what you do, there's public perception, you know. And we don't do anything illegal. We run things. It's been good through the years. We've always followed the law and done the right thing. As far as public perception, by the next morning, whatever takes place, there's usually out on the street in a coffee shop or in the bars anyway. So they get plenty of publicity and they know what's going on. So they can have their opinion. They're entitled to that, no doubt. But I'm for leaving it like it is.
Alderman Dyer, you have any comments on this?
This suggests if we're going to have this listed on the agenda or not.
Basically, whether we list, whether we're going to list executive session on there or if we're not going to have one, we still list it on the agenda.
I think it don't matter. Either way you do it, somebody's going to wonder, oh, why'd you have to have an emergency session? Because no, it's not going to, you're going to get people wondering either way. I mean, if the guy at the meeting, if, well, he's from the state.
From the state Attorney General's Office.
I mean, if he's saying that's the best way to do it, I don't see nothing wrong with trying it that way. But I think you're still going to get the same questions. But, you know, unlike Beth, I've never had anybody ever ask me about executive session at all.
You know how this thing came up to begin with? I got a call from the Attorney General's Office. And a citizen, citizens from Warrenton, don't know who it is, had called the Attorney General's Office and advised them that we needed to host a seminar on the sunshine law because they thought we were violating the sunshine law bottom of block. So that's how this thing first surfaced. We turned down that opportunity and were later invited to attend a seminar at the Wentzville City Hall. Counselor Grubel, any comments on this or?
Well, I mean, I think Alderman Dyer makes a good point that if you do the, I see Phil smiling over there. Here we go. If you do the emergency executive session, it's going to create controversy. You guys waited, you know, it's kind of one way or another. I mean, you know, if there is some public perception, how vocal it is or not to change it, as far as staff, Terry and I have said, we can do it either way. So if there was a vote to change it and do it the other way, we'd make it work. And we haven't had a problem because it's, you know, quite honestly, we don't have as much executive session. You know, I think the spirit of the sunshine is probably, it's not illegal. A lawyer's going to look at it as black and white. Are we doing it legally or illegally? Every city does it similar to this way. Doing it the other way is probably more consistent with the spirit of the sunshine law. Though the sunshine law is not the best written statute out there where it's really clear what is, how is it supposed to be done? How is it not supposed to be done? And the Attorney General's never issued an official opinion on it. You know, I know Mr. Durbin has said this, and he said this to the Missouri Municipal Attorneys Association last year. And I think he got, almost ran out of the building because they're like, you're not a lawyer, blah, blah, blah. But staff has reviewed it and we're okay with it. If you guys want to change it, you know, we have no problem with it. We can make it work, you know, either way because it's different than the way, you know, our executive sessions, the amount of them have been much different so far. And I think if you guys are comfortable with going this way, if we think it needs to go back the other way, we're comfortable coming back to you guys and saying, hey, can we go back to doing it the other way because this is not working for getting the city's business done?
On the other cities that you represent, how many of them do it the way we're doing versus the way the state recommends?
Well, I serve as city attorney for three other cities. And the other three cities do it without it on the agenda unless they have a meeting. So, but they're also probably have an executive session once every year.
Once a year?
Yeah. But they're smaller cities, not like, yeah. The city with a million dollar budget, so it's much better.
Alderman Clark?
Well, I attended a similar seminar at Ensbroke in 2009. And you're right, the guy puts on a really good seminar. I don't really see where there's much difference since we can do it as an emergency. I don't see where you gain anything one way or the other. I've never had anybody come to me and question that. I think mostly that is because, for some reason, our executive sessions beat me out the door. I've had several times where I stopped to get gas or something and they already knew what we did in great detail. And it always concerned me, how it gets out ahead of us. So as far as I'm concerned, we don't even need the executive session.
Good point. I mean, there's a lot of.
Beats me out the door. I don't know what the difference is.
Why are we doing anything in executive session?
I can understand from a legal point, there are some things you want to have in a closed session. But it seems, like I said, it beats me out the door, so I don't know. It doesn't make me any difference. I could go, like we can always revert back, so I don't have any trouble changing.
We've discussed this at a prior board meeting. We've discussed it now. I would recommend, I would make a motion that we follow the recommended best practice of the state, remove all executive session reference from the agenda unless a known topic is listed with a corresponding section statute allowing it to be closed.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark. Melody, would you read that motion back? Because I wasn't paying attention.
I got a question. Should it be stated that we could revert back in that? Does it make any difference?
No, you guys could, just as you consider this, you could next meeting make a motion to revert back.
Motion is to remove all executive session reference from the agenda unless a known topic is listed with a corresponding section of statute allowing it to be closed.
That is correct.
I ask for a roll call vote.
Alderman Clay?
No.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
No.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to two.
Okay.
The rest of the things on this listing are really, you know, things that staff needs to really be involved in. For example, a log for all public record requests. Currently, if a request comes into the police department, they might get a request directly and handle it. If a request would come into the court clerk, she might handle that. What we need to do is institute a policy where all of those requests get funneled through the city clerk so that there is one log for the entire city that maintains the documentation about what requests have come in and how those have been handled. So we will get that put in place very quickly. He reiterated that charges for copies of city records must be consistent for all parties. You can't pick and choose who has to pay and who does not have to pay. You've got to be consistent with your pricing structure. Email documents that are distributed to two or more elected officials must be part of the city's records. So what we've done, and we actually had already instituted this, is any of those documents are copied to the city clerk and she will maintain the city's records of those email documents. So we've already got that in place. And his word was, we need to institute a sunshine cop for executive sessions. Someone that the board has designated the responsibility and authority. And if you are in executive session and the discussion starts to veer from a topic that would not be something allowable, that the sunshine cop has all of your blessings, so to speak, to say, it's time to stop the conversation, you know, we're not following what we should be following for executive session anymore. Their recommendation, their city attorney happened to be sitting there and they very specifically said that that's who that should be, at least in their instance. And one of the things that would be a big change that they absolutely recommend is that items that are not on the agenda should not be allowed to be discussed. And where this really affects us is in the department head reporting area. Because many times, something will come up and it's not an agenda listed item. And usually, these are not significant things like bids or anything like that, but informational things. And we need to not allow that to happen. The recommendation from our city attorney is that we add an area under my part of the report and title that operational updates. So by putting that, it's anticipated those will be operational type informational pieces that don't necessarily have to be listed, but allow us to provide that information to the board and to the public by viewing the meeting. So the other thing that really surprised me is he made a very specific statement that elected officials are not employees. And while an employee may be discussed in executive session, elected officials cannot go to executive session to discuss problems with other elected officials. And I was very surprised by that. So unless some of you have an issue with some of the things that we need to do internally as staff and put in place, then we will get started on making sure that we're following the best practices that Mr. Durkin gave us.
I do like the comment about having the executive session cop because I think it's too easy to drift into other areas in the executive session. And the law's pretty specific on what we're supposed to be doing there. So I think that's something we might look at and consider. Thank you, Terry. Is that all?
Let's see.
I just want, is that normally the mayor?
No, it's normally the city attorney.
Well, he's pretty much done that before.
He's kept us in line.
Good.
The best he could.
No, we've, you guys have always been very good about staying on task. Some of the stories I've heard from other city attorneys, I couldn't imagine trying to regulate it. We usually have a pretty clear agenda for them.
A couple of other small items. Would like to request to schedule a work session on August the 14th. That's a Tuesday. Purpose of that would be to discuss how we want to move forward with special events in the new fiscal year. We've had a lot of discussions at different points in time about, you know, Catch the Glow, the Auto Fest, some of the other things we're doing and whether we want to continue those or change them or move them to a new venue. So if that works with everyone's schedule, we'd like to get that started so that we can start planning for however we're going to handle things for the upcoming fiscal year.
Anyone have an issue with August 14?
6:00 P.M.?
6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M. works?
I may be out of town, but I'll double check there.
Is that a regular board meeting night?
No.
No, okay.
And then last is just informational. We have changed schedules for our court clerks, as you're all aware. We currently have someone here on Tuesday nights to 6:00 P.M. at the front window to be able to accept payments. And because of the documentation required for payments by the court, we didn't always have someone here that could accept the court documents that were needed for payment. So Gabrielle changed the schedule today. And someone will be here immediately, starting with the Tuesday night prior to the court date. And then we're trying to figure out how to make the schedule work for every Tuesday to be able to have someone here. But that's a very busy week for accepting payments for the court, so.
Is that, that shift in the schedule, is that truly shifting hours or is that going to incur overtime?
No, we have them come in later and then stay later that day. No, we have them come in later and then stay later that day, whoever's on the 6:00 P.M. rotation.
Thank you.
So, it, it doesn't create...
Will that person just be one person and be by themselves?
No, we never have them here. There's always at least two people here for that. But we didn't always have the person who had the knowledge to be able to accept the court payment documents. So, it will solve that problem the week of court. And then we're trying to figure out how to make that happen every week on Tuesday. But at least for now, we've got it covered for the Tuesday prior to the court day.
Okay.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
I've got item 11, Recreation Director Jenny Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and Board of Aldermen. I have a few items that I'd like to discuss with you tonight. First of all, we have the citywide yard sale coming up. It's scheduled for Saturday, July 28th. And I would like to request the board to lift the sign ordinance for 24 hours so that yard sale hosts can put up directional signs and advertising signs. This would be from the Friday before, the day before, from 4:00 P.M. until the day of the citywide yard sale at 4:00 P.M.
We need a motion to do that?
Yes, please.
Probably so.
Yes, please.
Okay, so you're asking to lift the, uh...
The sign ordinance.
Yard sign ordinance or just the sign ordinance?
I believe that the wording is a sign ordinance.
I would ask that we wait, put that on next agenda if you guys are going to approve it, so I can do a moratorium on those signs. We're revising all the sign ordinances, so I want to make sure that moratorium is neutral to be a circuit court opinion.
Is that enough time for you, Jenny?
That's perfectly fine, thank you.
We're going to postpone that till the next meeting.
Okay, then, moving on, I have a farmer's market update. Uh, the farmer's market is starting this Saturday under the new pavilion. It's really exciting. I'd like to make a couple of additions to the market in order to make the market a little more dynamic. One of the things I'd like to do is allow for the sale of frozen meat from an inspected processor. The second thing is to allow acquired items to be sold, but this would be only from a strip list. If I could, I'm going to go ahead and give you an idea of what we offer to have sold there and then let you know which ones of those could be acquired from an outside source. We currently offer baked goods, jellies, jams, cheeses, crafts, goat milk soap, fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, nuts, plants, cut flowers, honey cider eggs. And what we would allow to be from an outside source or acquired by that farmer or that vendor from someone else would be the items not including baked goods, jellies, jams, or cheeses. So, they would be approved items with the exception of not including baked goods, jellies, jams, or cheeses. That's because the market, farmer, farmer's market vendors, they're going to be making those in their own kitchen and that needs to go direct to the consumer. But as far as the crafts, the fresh fruits and vegetables, I think that's going to help us bring more fresh products to our local shoppers and also allow them to keep the farmer's market busy when the farmers don't have the produce that they're waiting for readily available. Moving on, I'd also like to allow commercial vendors. Commercial vendors would be a great addition. I think it'll help us bring in different varieties of fruits and vegetables. And these are just different ways that I think we can improve our farmer's market. Unless you have any major objections, we'll go ahead and have these additions in place this Saturday.
What, your commercial vendors? I, I guess I didn't quite understand. They're going to be selling fruits and vegetables too?
Right. They would be only selling the items that are approved on the list. Once in a while, you'll find a local farmer that also sells to Schnucks. Or you might find maybe a local farm like in Eckert's or something like that. I'm trying to think of a smaller name. There's one around Wright City and they might want to come here. Because what happens is sometimes a farmer, whether it's commercial or a private farm, they'll have something that's maybe in small quantity or maybe it's blemished. Or maybe it's a specialty item that they want to kind of try out and see if anybody's interested in it. And that's a good way for them to come out here and, and help us with what we're doing.
I'm wondering about the competition. If you let the commercial people come in, let's say you let an Eckert's archer or Tierbrock's archer come in, is, are we shooting ourselves in the foot with the local farm market then?
I haven't seen interest from those large commercial farmers. The thing that I think we're mainly missing on is like the peach guy and there's nobody else here that's selling peaches. I think that when it comes to farmers, especially a commercial person, they're going to come somewhere where they think it's going to be worth their time. So, I don't think that they'd come out here with commercial tomatoes perhaps if we have a lot of local farmers selling the tomatoes. I think it's going to be more or less a demand, a demand, supply and demand issue and they might notice that we're not getting the peaches out here, we're not getting the blueberries out here, so they might come out here. In any situation like that, yes, an additional vendor may create some type of competition. But I think overall, the benefit to our community with having more choices for them of fresh fruits and also bringing more foot traffic to the market, I think that's going to outweigh any type of slight competition we might see.
Did I, did I understand correctly that you, you were wanting to allow sale of eggs?
The eggs are approved, actually. We've been selling eggs and they have to come from a licensed source. We haven't had eggs...
I thought, I thought our city attorney recommended not, not to do that.
Well, we had, when we, when we did revamped the statutes or whipped the statutes and looked at the ordinance, that was one of the items that would be allowed under a locally grown produce vendor under the state statutes. And, and you know, that list was really restrictive to what we, and that was, you know, basically what we came up with within our ordinance. So, yeah, we, I, I believe we approved the eggs, didn't we Jenny? That was part of it.
Yes.
But I don't think, you're not selling really any eggs out there because they're not licensed.
There is one lady that sells eggs. They have to be from a licensed source. So, they have to be licensed in order to sell them.
That's a, that's a straight law.
Yeah. We have to basically allow them, but it has to be from the source.
Do we have a square footage that we're giving each vendor? Is there a minimum, maximum?
We do. We, well, now, I won't say there's a minimum or maximum because they have free vending space. So, they have an opportunity to communicate with us, let us know what their needs are. Our registration form for the vendors, however, lists the, let's see, 15 by 15 is what we typically do in an event, in a vendor situation. But we're able to work with the vendors and what they do is they arrive that morning, they have a pass for the season and then it's first come, first served. So, they start to pull in and we find them in place. And then as they sell out, they leave.
So, if a vendor shows up and there's no room, they, they'd have to wait for someone to leave or would they know ahead of time if there's any room?
There, it's first come, first served. So, if they did show up and the prime space wasn't available, we have the parking lot to work with. That's on Walton Street. We've typically used that in the past. We haven't been to an instance so far because again, this is before we've made any additions like we're talking about today. But we haven't come to a place where we ran out of room.
So, when they first apply, they get a pass for the season?
That's right. And it's at no cost. So, it makes it an attractive opportunity for them to come out and sell their goods.
Can we remind the public of the time on that, on Saturdays?
Yes, yes. This is available on Saturdays and this will be July 7th through October 6th. And we start at 8:00 A.M. and we end at 10:30 A.M.
Thank you.
How many applications or passes have been issued?
I will take a look here.
Need to look.
In 2010, we had 12. In 2011, we had 21. I don't seem to have the numbers for 2000, uh, 2012 with me. But we typically have about eight, six to eight vendors that participate on a weekend on a Saturday. And it depends on when you get there. I mean, you pretty much see all the activity right around 8 o'clock. We have customers that will line up and we wait till we ring the bell. At 8 o'clock, we ring the bell and they can start to purchase. We have people that walk up, people that drive, maybe they're out yard selling and they stop in. And then there's people that just have that special meal that they're going to make and they pick that up for that evening. So, we also have customers that follow a certain produce. So, they're looking for the tomatoes and looking for the sweet corn. One of the things I noticed, you know, if you restrict us to just the local farmers, if we get a storm in here and it's really windy and everybody's tomato plants break, we're pretty much out of tomatoes. But if we allow, you know, a commercial grower to come in, maybe they'll come in because they've noticed that there's a need out here for, for the tomatoes to be offered, then we might be able to carry on in those ways. One of the things I want to do is create a draw that we can count on, create a diverse farmer's market that a lot of people look forward to and count on as well.
On the frozen meat situation here, I guess I don't understand it. Where, where is this meat coming from?
Well, the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, they put together a list of items that are approved. And one of the things that they list is frozen meat from an inspected, inspected processor. And then a footnote states that the processors must be inspected by the USDA or Missouri Department of Agriculture. You see, the USDA, they handle meats and then you have Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services that take care of what the produce and the food items that don't fall into this category.
Is this, you know, I see these guys around town all the time, they have a pickup truck with a deep freezer in the back of it. Is that what they're doing, selling, selling meat out of that freezer? Would it be similar to the, to them?
Although I don't, I'm not familiar with their situation, that would be a feasible situation if that person is able to give us documentation that their meat is coming from an inspected source, whether it's them that's being inspected or if they are, you know, working for another company and they're the middle person.
I guess, I've been, for the last few years, and Terry will probably verify it, I've gone to a lot of different farmer's markets and they do allow the frozen meat at most of them, but they're normally coming from per se a farm, straight from the farm, they're not going through a rugged or processor. And, but it is inspected and everything, the meat qualifications. Are you suggesting that we're going to be getting it, it would be open to people who would go to a commercial processor and have it frozen and brought in?
Well, the way that I look at it, the, um, the farm would be inspected and then they would be able to sell that. And then in that farm, they might have employees that, you know, one to four employees, I'm thinking for typical merchant. If you go back to when I opened the discussion, the only items that could be acquired, some from another source, so maybe I should clarify, would be not baked goods, not jellies, not jams, not cheeses. And that actually came from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. If I can, I'll go ahead and, and read this. You'll notice it doesn't state the meats. It's just one line here. "The Missouri 1999 Food Code states that some non-potentially hazard foods such as jams, jellies, cookies, cakes, and dry powder mixes may be produced and sold from a non-inspected kitchen. This may be done under sanitary conditions and the seller must be the person making the product and you are selling directly to the end consumer." That's not stated in reference to the meats. When it mentions meats, it just states frozen meat from an inspected processor and then it has a footnote, "Processors inspected by the USDA or Missouri Department of Agriculture." So, from an inspected processor, but it's not delineated in here that it has to be direct to consumer. But that is something that the board could decide. We could definitely say only from an inspected farm as long, in the event that it is direct to consumer.
Okay. Cause I would, I would, I don't mind like the local farmers who, who do that. I know there's one in Wright City and I'm sure there's other ones locally that do it where they do it straight from the farm and then go to the markets and stuff to do it. I don't have a problem with that, but I would hate to see where they, I could go to a, a local store or meat processor that inspects it and repackage it myself and, and sell it. I don't, I don't think that's what our intent is for that.
I agree with you, Alderman Clark.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns? I, I understand what Alderman Clark's saying there and I guess that's kind of my, one of my concerns too. I don't, I don't want the, if, if we have a local farmer doing that, which obviously we have some Wright City that do it and so forth, I think that's who we, we want to encourage to do it. I don't want to get in competition with a, a local commercial meat processor or anything.
Sure.
So, I don't know how we, how we handle that.
Would the board be comfortable then with these additions as long as we are strict on the sources of the meat, just as we stated? Are we okay with sale of frozen meats from the farm that has been inspected, allowing acquired items to be sold, those, those that I mentioned earlier? And then allowing commercial vendors? If we are okay with that, I'll go ahead and get that in place by Saturday.
It's okay with me. Any concerns? Let me tell them.
No, sir.
We're talking about changing it from an inspected processor to an inspected farm or?
Right, in, in regards to the meat, not just that the, the original source is an inspected processor, but that it's actually coming directly from an inspected farm to the consumer. That's what we're saying with that.
That's right.
Great. Then I'd like to move on to my final topic, if that is okay. Daily, the recreation department takes a look at the playing conditions for our ball fields, whether it's for practices or games. We take several, several things into consideration. Playing conditions, is slippery as you're standing in water? Is there rain? One of the things that we'd like to do in order to ensure public safety is to add an additional item to that checklist. And that would be whether or not there is a heat warning or heat advisory in effect. What we're doing right now is working with that as an unofficial procedure, seems to be working out. And what we'll do is later on look to writing up a policy. We just wanted to update you on what we're doing with that topic.
Good.
Then are those games rescheduled, Jenny?
Yes, yes. We are working on finding a Friday night after this next week goes. Maybe we'll get a little bit of cooler temperatures to work with, maybe a 7 o'clock start time. And with that, we'll hope that we don't have a heat warning or heat advisory in effect that day.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your time.
I'll reiterate Alderman Kendall's comments about Catch the Glow. I thought it was very well organized. I, I thought that, not only your department, but all the departments, I thought the police had a great presence there throughout the area that they were seen and noted that they were available should someone need help or anything. But all the departments went, pulled together and helped you out on that. So, we need to give them all a pat on the back.
Thank you. It's definitely a team effort, thank you.
I'd like to get, when you get the paperwork ready, all the different, for your registration and, and what's allowed and not allowed type information.
For the farmer's market, sir?
For the farmer's market.
Yes.
Cause there's several vendors that I, that come and ask me this and I, I never know quite all the right answers to tell them.
I would be happy to get that.
At least I would have something right and referred to.
Sure.
I'm on item, if, are you, are you done Jenny?
That's all for tonight. Thank you very much, Mayor Dyer.
I'm on item 12, Bills to Ordinances. And the first bill is bill number 31-12.
Call for the first reading of bill number 31-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallow for first reading of bill 31-12.
A zoning ordinance is authorized under Section 405.390 of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri, approving a site plan for Yeebo Incorporated located at 8001 Washington Avenue.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 31-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dyer for second and final reading of bill number 31-12.
A zoning ordinance is authorized under Section 405.390 of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri, approving a site plan for Yeebo Incorporated located at 8001 Washington Avenue.
We need a vote on that.
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Next item is bill number 32-12.
Call for the first reading of bill number 32-12. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Dyer for first reading of bill number 32-12.
An ordinance approving the conditional use to allow outdoor storage tanks for the manufacturing process of soy sauce at 8001 Washington Avenue.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 32-12.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passing of bill number 32-12.
An ordinance approving the conditional use to allow outdoor storage tanks for the manufacturing process of soy sauce at 8001 Washington Avenue.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I'll enter, is there anything else before I move on? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel.
So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dyer to move to executive session and discuss personnel. All those in favor say aye. Pose likewise.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn carried.
Second.
Oh, you made a motion?
To adjourn.
Yeah, I should have made that.
No, we need to adjourn from this before we go. Did we do that?
We did that. We adjourned, we made a motion to adjourn to executive session. You think it would be two motion?
No, I guess I, I guess I don't know.